Evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, April 17, 2025. Going to section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2025 through January 2026. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 8, 2025. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 17, 2025 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting has also been posted on the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. We don't have an application tonight, but we will have a hearing, so those guidelines associated with public comment obtain. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. A countdown clock on your screen will help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. An appropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Ms. Philip, call the roll, please.
Certainly. Mr. Baddeheimer?
Here.
Ms. Capisoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mayor Frida?
Mark, your mute is on.
Yeah.
Oh, calling in by phone, too. Thank you.
Oh, oh, I see. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having trouble here.
That's all right.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka? Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We are quorum.
Thank you. Any announcements from board members or staff before we dive into our other business? Okay, seeing none. I'm aware that we do not have any subcommittee reports this evening, and the minutes that's maybe on your agenda are being tabled for a future meeting. So we're going straight into the hearing on the 2023 Princeton Master Plan and Master Plan Reexamination Appendix 11-11. This is the Environmental Resource Inventory, which has been underway for quite some time, so it's great to see it finished and coming to us. And so I'll turn to Mr. Lesko to start us off. And thank you, Jerry. So-called fresh in my mind. Can you speak to jurisdiction and notice, please?
The board has jurisdiction. Notice is proper. All the requisites have been fulfilled.
Okay.
Yeah. And since this is a formal hearing, I will swear in everybody who testifies.
Okay, good. Justin, let's go.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Would you like to start with me, Jerry?
Yes. May I, Jerry? Or, Justin? Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give to be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Thank you, thank you. And good evening, members of the board and members of the public. I'm just going to give a brief introduction of what we're doing tonight. It's not too dissimilar from the hearing that we had a few months ago about the stormwater mitigation plan. This is, like Jerry said, a formal hearing to adopt an appendix of the master plan. So it's also somewhat similar to what we did the nine hours to adopt the plan a few years back. Maybe it won't go that long, but I'll introduce everyone that's here. But before we get into that, I just want to show a page from the current plan. Jerry, do we need to mark this as an exhibit if it's in our current master plan?
No, if you could just identify it, Justin.
Sure, certainly. This is on page 168 of the Conservation, Open Space, and Recreation Element of the Master Plan that this board adopted. And this is the section about coordination throughout the master plan that we find at the end of each element. Now, this one specifically mentions the Environmental Resource Inventory, and I'm going to read directly from it. It says, "The Environmental Resource Inventory, ERI, is a living document like the master plan that details all natural resources and environmentally significant features throughout Princeton. The ERI provides specific data and information on surface water, groundwater soils, wetlands, forests, geology, floodplains, and critical wildlife to support implementation of this Conservation, Open Space, and Recreation Plan element." Princeton's prior ERI was prepared in 2010 by DVRPC, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission for our area, for the former borough and former township. The municipality expects to prepare and adopt a revised ERI following the adoption of this master plan. The information in the new ERI will inform the Planning Board and Environmental Commission on decisions related to conservation and environmental management." So like I said last time, the key word here is "I" for inventory, as I'm sure our consultant, Tristan Harrison, will get into in a minute. But here's where this idea kind of came to not only create this master plan that we haven't, or this, excuse me, inventory that we haven't updated since 2010, but also to adopt it as an appendix of the master plan to help you with your decisions when they come. Just moving on a little more throughout the plan, there are general conservation recommendations for this element on page 170, and recommendations 19 and 20 both kind of directly relate to the ERI. The first says, "Maintain consistency between the master plan and the new ERI," and the second says, "Pursue conservation of lands identified by NJ Conservation Blueprint and coordinate with Princeton's Environmental Resource Inventory." I bring that up because you'll probably see a map pretty soon from Mr. Harrison that does just that with the NJ Conservation Blueprint provided by the state. You'll see several other maps that are either very similar to the ones within this element or are nearly identical to them. So without further ado, I'll just introduce everyone that's here tonight that worked on this plan, or this inventory, excuse me. We have Tristan Harrison from Clark Cane Hints, like I mentioned, a licensed professional planner. We have Deanna Stockton, our municipal engineer and deputy administrator for infrastructure and operations, and we have Inga Reich, our open space manager as well within our engineering department. And alongside me, and really alongside the Environmental Commission, we worked on this inventory for the past couple of months, if not really an idea that goes back years, to bring it to you today. So with all that being said, I don't know if there's anything Deanna or Inga would like to add at this time, but I would otherwise hand it over to Tristan now.
Listen, if you could raise your- I would like to, as we swear in Tristan, also swear in Deanna and Inga, so that anybody who chimes in or, you know, would be helpful to have with answering a question is already under oath.
Yep. If the three, you can raise your right hand. Very good. I can't tell you how many people actually raised their left hand when I asked them to do that. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give to be the truth?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed? And if you could just state your full names again for the record.
Deanna Stockton.
Tristan Harrison with Clark Cane Hints.
Inga Reich.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all. Go right ahead. Mr. Harrison, are you going to share your screen?
I will. And thank you, Justin. That was a perfect introduction for what I'm about to share tonight. So can you see the PowerPoint screen?
Yes. Is this part of the ERI that is before us, or is it a PowerPoint presentation? It's-
So this is a standalone PowerPoint presentation with excerpts from the ERI document.
Okay. Why don't we mark that as exhibit PB1?
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so good evening, everybody. My name is Tristan Harrison. I'm a planner with Clark Cane Hints. Happy to be here to give you a very brief 15-minute or so overview of the Environmental Resource Inventory update, and then open it up to some discussion and questions afterwards. So first, again, I'd like to thank the advisory committee, which consisted of Deanna, Justin, Inga, and Jim. They were very helpful throughout this process. They helped guide the scope when we first started, and we met several times during the project and got very helpful feedback on each version, each draft. And Inga especially provided a lot of local data related to open space and critical species that was very helpful, and it's information that our office would not have been able to provide ourselves. So just a quick description. What is an Environmental Resource Inventory, or ERI? It's essentially a compendium of data tables, maps, environmental information that is all collected in one place. I like to think of it as kind of like a little atlas for a town, or as Justin has described, a snapshot of the physical environment, and that includes both built and natural features. This document is prepared for the municipality, and as we've said, is adopted as an appendix of the master plan, and it'll support local land use decisions and conservation efforts in the municipality. But it's important to note that this is not a policy document in itself. You will not find any language resembling recommendations, goals, or strategies in this document. It's really supposed to provide information for implementation of the master plan and other appendices of the master plan. So here's a quick overview of the scope of the update. So the 2025 ERI update focused, obviously, on consolidation of the borough and the township information. That 2010 ERI that was prepared by DVRPC and volunteers in both former municipalities really separated out information between borough and township, so we're combining that here. Everything's in one table, obviously, in one map. And we updated all that information to current, as current as we could, and some of those data sources have changed for better, I mean, all for better. We've, we have some additional sources as well, and where we could, we added in additional information that was not included in the 2010 ERI. But I will emphasize that this was primarily an update project, although there was some flexibility in, you know, we added in things where we could and where it made sense. We also focused on streamlining the text and narrative sections of the ERI with a focus on making it, one, easy to navigate and use. So the organization may have changed a little bit in how the document is formatted and how the sections and subsections are organized. We also focused on minimizing redundancies where we could, both within the ERI document itself, as well as redundancies with other documents that the municipality has, primarily the 2023 Master Plan, the municipality's Climate Action Report, and also the Climate Change Vulnerability Assessment within the master plan, as obviously we're going to talk about climate within the Environmental Resource Inventory and climate change. And we also focused on more of a local focus, where the 2010 ERI, you know, gave a lot of regional background. We really tried to tailor it. How can we tailor the ERI to be locally focused? How is it going to most effectively inform local decisions? And I'll also note that this contains a lot of the, or all of the components for sustainable jersey credit for adoption of an ERI. So I'm going to very quickly run through section by section here. There's a lot to cover. It's over 150-page document. So I'm just going to include a couple of maps here and there and give you a quick synopsis of each section and the changes that you will see in the updated ERI. So in the Land Use Land Cover section, the main change, obviously, is that we're looking at 2020 land use land cover data. The DEP updates that data approximately every five years. Here, we're looking at a map of the general land cover categories. And in the ERI, we also break down those categories into the subcategories. So that's every type of wetlands that NJDP defines, every type of urban land, every type of forest. And we also provide a comparison with past land use land cover data that DEP has published, starting with looking at 2002, which was in the 2010 ERI, as well as the 2025, or sorry, 2015 land use land cover data. And we're looking at acreage changes. Yep.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if not tonight, at some point, people may wonder at, you know, subdivisions beyond the downtown area or uptown area, wondering at their neighborhood being designated urban. So could you speak a little bit to the, to that designation and how it's defined from a planning perspective by the state and federal government?
Sure, that's a very important point. So urban land, I'll emphasize that these land use land cover categories, they're based on what's known as the Anderson Land Use Classification System, and that's basically a hierarchy of land uses. So it starts off with these six general categories. Urban land is basically developed land. That includes both, you know, your downtown development, as well as things like developed active recreation spaces or single-family dwellings and things like that.
Thanks.
Sure. So moving on to the section on topography and soils. Soils hasn't really, soils data, sorry, hasn't really changed much, but we've remapped it, and we've updated the farmland classification map here, which is what you can see on the slide. This is data from the USDA, as well as, you know, the soil data is from USDA as well. And this is basically showing you the different classifications of farmland value based on the unique environmental characteristics of those soils. And then on the left here, we have the physiographic regions. So Princeton is in the Piedmont Plateau, right at the edge of it, actually. And so this section, you know, includes a lot of, some information that's in the master plan, such as steep slope mapping, as well as a little discussion about radon and other subtopics related to soils and what you can see above the surface, which is topography and slopes. Moving on into surface water resources, here we're looking at a map of the watersheds and subwatersheds of the Princeton area. And what we're looking at is, so watersheds are basically defined by the USGS as HUCs, or HUCs, which stands for hydrologic unit codes. And so you can see this thick blue line separating the larger watershed, which is the Millstone River watershed, and then within it, you can see these subwatersheds that are color-coded. Those are lower in the hierarchy of watersheds. And actually, since 2010, there have been additional subwatersheds added. This darker purple around Princeton did not exist at the last time, at the last ERI in 2010. And basically, these, these sub watershed areas, these HUC14s, they're called HUC14s because it's a code that has 14 digits in them, because it's lower, it's more specific. And this is essentially how water quality is regulated, or how different watershed areas are defined by NJDP. We're still in surface water resources here. Main point here is that the wetlands dataset is based on the 2020 land use land cover. So that was updated here. And we're also looking at the different categories of streams, which relates to water quality and also stream corridor protection. So it's category one and category two streams. Still in surface water resources here, we included the updated FEMA flood mapping, which they're based on the 2017 effective flood insurance rates maps or FRS. Initially, we had intention of including inland flood mapping, but as you know, Princeton has much more stringent flood regulations regarding inland flooding than the state. So that mapping data was not readily available, so it's not included in the ERI. But we describe generally what the inland flood rule means for Princeton and the state, and how that relates to development as kind of a side narrative within the ERI. And then we've also updated the flood history narrative to describe the major flood events that have occurred in Princeton's history and recent history. So here we have a map from the surface water quality section, and what we're looking at here is the point data shows different water quality monitoring stations. That's through NJTP's programs. AMNET monitors biological resources, so indicator species like certain kind of water bugs essentially that indicate water quality. And then we also, again, we have our two different types of streams, category one, category two, and those correspond to different types of riparian zones that the state regulates. So 300-foot riparian zone buffers for category one streams, so that would be Stony Brook here in purple, as well as 150-foot riparian zones for non-category one streams, which would be essentially everything else. So now we're moving on into the groundwater section. So this map shows groundwater recharge potential, and this map was included in the Princeton Master Plan, but we've made some key changes to it that you can see, we show the disturbed soils, which is essentially your downtown or your most developed portion of the municipality in pink. And this whole section on groundwater, we made a lot of connections to the master plan. There's, there's some information that is included in both, such as the groundwater recharge, as well as wellhead protection areas. But we also look at aquifer and bedrock geology and what that means for things like water filtration and how this impacts impervious coverage in the municipality and how that is regulated or managed. Moving on into biological resources. So here we're again looking at the 2020 land use land cover data, but this is, like I was saying before, a more specific breakdown within each of those categories. So we got coniferous forest in darkest green, we've got a little bit lighter mixed forest, we've got deciduous forest and the like, and wetlands in blue, we have the different types of wetlands. And these, even these categories, you can get even more specific. We grouped them in a way that was logical, so as to not have, you know, 50 colors on a map, that it becomes a little bit tedious to read. Here, we're looking at species-based habitat. So this is from the DEP's Landscape Project data, version 3.3, and it also includes the verified and potential vernal habitat that the state has mapped in red there. And the different categories of species-based habitat include riparian zones, or sorry, riparian corridors, core forest that is greater than 10 hectares, and grassland areas that are greater than 18 hectares. And these are defined in the Landscape Project. So we didn't, we didn't, you know, we didn't make these categories up. We didn't choose that specific type or that specific threshold for what core forest means. So if you're interested, there are links to the Landscape Project, but we've done our best to describe that in a way that's easy to understand and use within the ERI.
May I ask a quick question here?
Sure.
I feel like along the ridge especially, but maybe another, maybe in the southwest also, there might very well be additional, I very much suspect there would be, additional potential vernal habitat, if not verified vernal habitat? And I wonder if there is a provision in the Landscape Project for local organizations, school groups, you know, nonprofits like the Watershed Institute, et cetera, with using science-based criteria, of course, but with volunteer labor? If it's, if it's possible to over time continue to update this map with potential vernal habitat, because I think it could be really helpful as we continue to preserve open space that has particular environmental resource value. And so I'll stop there and ask if you know whether there is a way that we locally can contribute to that dataset.
Yeah, that's a great point. And the short answer is, I'm not sure how you would go about at a local level determining this. I would preface all of the data in this ERI that is provided by the state or other sources. A lot of it is derived from geospatial data, this Landscape Project specifically. I know that verified vernal habitat points, or the areas where they have a radius, they set a radius from a point that they've inspected. All of the potential vernal habitat, I believe, was derived from, I believe it was a partnership with the Rutgers Geospatial Group. And I'm sure that there are procedures to do a more local field study of what potential vernal habitat exists in the municipality, because this is, you know, on this map, potential vernal habitat, that is basically the phrase from the Landscape Project. That doesn't encompass all literal potential vernal habitat, and that's a great point that you bring up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. And now that we have, you know, people, specifically Inga, started bird dogging all of this stuff, you know, maybe we have an opportunity to, yeah, again, over time, you know, continue to update it for the next ERI. Mr. Taylor, you had a question?
Yeah, may I just add to your comment, Louise, Madam Chairman? I think you're right on. If we all remember the private sector debate over what to do about the ridge, first of all, there was a major community interest, neighborhood interest, a large number of people who were keenly interested and did research. Secondly, there was active involvement from Princeton University. Apparently, a professor had devoted considerable time to these kinds of issues over the years. And then finally, to the issue of vernal, as well as trees, there was a lengthy, and I thought very professional discussion by the applicants. So the information is out there, or at least more information is out there. And I think Madam Chairman has identified something that, that would be well received by a large group of people in the area.
Yeah, thanks for that. I, part of the reason I brought it up is that later on in the ERI, we're talking about specific plant and animal species and birds. Some of that data was collected and reported by citizens, residents of Princeton who have a very keen interest- who have a very keen interest and, you know, whose names were, who were given a shout out in the ERI, which I thought was great. And I just thought that, you know, maybe a kind of a similar effort, if not necessarily attribution, might, yeah, at some point in the future be helpful here, too.
Yeah, thank you. Those are all very great points. And I would even throw out there that, you know, this ERI, because we're using data that's readily available to us for the most part. It could be viewed as a starting point and anything that the municipality wants to pursue as updating more specifically could always be even an appendix to this ERI or as part of an ERI update.
So it's a snapshot and
It's a snapshot.
Living shot, living document, as you said, from the start. Okay, moving on. Don't mean to hold things up.
No, no, thank you. Here, we're still looking at landscape project data, but this is the landscape project habitat ranks. So this should look familiar. It is also in the master plan. But the main difference here is that at Inga's suggestion, we've added the freshwater muscle habitat along Stony Brook.
Right.
And here we have the conservation blueprint data, again, also in the master plan. And in purple here, you can see the areas that have been ranked by a consortium, including Rowan University and some other groups based on different environmental factors and ecological factors as essentially target areas. If the municipality were to conserve additional land and get the the greatest bang for their buck on preserving the most valuable ecological land.
And Tristan, if I can just add something before you move on. This map where it says preserved open space, it's actually a combination of open space that's been preserved by the state, the county, the municipality, nonprofits or private groups and other public entities, which you'll see on the next map. They'll just be in five different colors here. They're in one color.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we were trying to keep this map relatively simple with a focus on the 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 ecological conservation blueprint data. But, you know, there's possibility of showing them both at the same time, which would also have its own.
Yeah, that's a great for when you're looking to connect, you know, create connections between and corridors between preserved spaces. Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, and I I just wanted to mention there's one key space that's been preserved that isn't shown on the map, which is the 90-acre Landwin property up on Harrington Road. So this is not absolutely up to date. There's another piece that council has always already approved acquisition of. It's still in the process of being closed upon, which is the shektel property, which is down along Cherry Valley Road. And I raise it, you know, partly to make the point that these are moving targets. We we're talking about this as a living document, but I want to make sure that this this board you know, expresses some intention to update quickly. Certain of the data sets, this being one. There's also the multifamily dwellings. Data, data that is changing rapidly as round three properties come online and will change further as round four properties come online. And the last thing I wanted to mention is the the surface water quality information, which the municipality is has already entered into an agreement with One Water to do a regional watershed improvement plan. And the first step in their research is to update sampling of all of the, you know, the waters within the within the region. So we should have new, you know, right now, I think the TMDLs are like 20-year-old data and there will be new data available, professionally generated new data available. And I want to make sure all of those get into the ERI as soon as they're available. So just wanted to plant that seed.
Great. Thank you. Agreed.
Yeah, all great points. I like that you said moving target because these are all moving targets. I mean, for for a good reason, you know, it means you're preserving more land. That's a great thing. I will say that the preserved open space data that we're showing here is already an update to the 2023 master plan. But even still, you know, additional land is being preserved. So it's great.
And both of the properties David named overlap with purple areas, which is
Okay, even better. So here we have the slightly updated open space map from the 2023 master plan. And obviously, there may be additional updates in the near future. We have the breakdown of state, county, municipal, nonprofit and other public groups and the different paths around the municipality. So now we're moving into built environment. Actually, we're still in built environment with the parks. This is just one of the maps in that section. This is the known contaminated sites list. And this shows different sites based on the different phases of remediation from the DEP's known containment at sites list data set. And there is a table corresponding with this and a description of precisely what the what what each of these sites means. And there are a bunch of other maps in the built environment section. A lot of them will be very similar to the master plan. So transportation, historic preservation or historic districts, rather sewer service area and things like that. So air quality is a new section we've added. It's primarily because it's included in the things that Sustainable Jersey wants to see in an ERI. This is kind of a real general section. It's it's got a real region focus. We we define the air quality index and a lot of you probably know it, what it is, and you've used it. It's typically part of like a weather report, you know, what is the air quality outside today? So we've done a little bit of a description on what that actually means and how air quality is monitored in the state and the region at different ambient stations or weather stations essentially. And then we've linked to NJDP permitted facility data related to any kind of permit for air quality impact. But I'll note that we did not specifically map those or inventory those. Again, it's a it's really rapidly moving target and we didn't really want to bog down the plan with that level of detail for this. It's really permit focused. Now we're looking at climate. So we pulled this out of the physiography section from the 2010 plan because we just we thought it or 2010 ERI, because we thought it deserved its own section. On the left, you can see the New Jersey climate zones as defined by the Office of the State Climatologist. They generally correspond with the different provinces of New Jersey, so the Piedmont, the Atlantic Coastal Plain. And on the right, we have the plant hardiness zones, which that map was just updated by the USDA in 2023 as the northeast becomes warmer and wetter. And so this whole climate section, you know, we've, we've tried to give it a primarily regional focus because climate is regional. And then we also discuss climate change. How could we not? So we have a really brief section on climate change with reference to the climate action plan that the municipality has as another appendix of the master plan. And these two graphs, I'm sure you've seen them. They're from the New Jersey Report, a scientific report on climate change showing the upward trend in the municipality of warmer and wetter climate. And then lastly, just a quick update on the appendices. A lot of this came from Inga. It was a very great help. Like we've said tonight, a lot of very specific species inventories and sightings and reports from volunteers and others in the municipality. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you for letting me run through that. And I'm happy to take any additional questions or
Thank you. David Cohen has a hand up. David?
Yeah, just a couple slides back about the climate change section. One of the things, you know, that I talk a lot about with our residents is the increasing frequency of the extreme weather events. And you do mention it in your narrative. But I'm wondering if there could be, you know, a graph. Because certainly the reading that I've done has indicated that that's something that has increased much more dramatically than, for example, temp, the average temperatures. You know, these or or the annual precipitation, you know, these graphs in a way, especially the one on the right, sort of downplay the dramatic current impacts of climate change. And I think that another chart that could that could address that question of extreme storm events, which by the way, are the ones that really impact our residents, both with the flash flooding and the need for improved stormwater management. I would love to, if the if we could include a graph like that in this document as well, I would really appreciate it.
That's a really, that's a great suggestion. I totally agree with that.
And it can, you know, it can be regional, just like these are regional. It doesn't have to be Princeton specific, but
Thank you. That's a really good suggestion.
Yeah, I I would just kind of like to get into procedure for a second. I think, and Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong. If we did want to make any substantial changes like that, we would probably need to renotice and hold another hearing. Not to say we can't do that, but Jerry, does that sound? And my lights are off. Good for climate change. Does that sound correct for something like this?
Yeah, it has to be substantial, though, and it has to be evaluated in terms of the document as a whole. I think what David was suggesting, I don't think that would necessitate another hearing.
Right. As I said, the narrative already addresses the increase in the extreme events and just having a graph that represented that observation. I don't, I don't see that as a as a significant change.
Okay, well, and then, you know, sorry to have to be like this, but I'm sorry that the lights are still off. But then just the other issue that we might have, if you do recommend, require that to be part of this approval, I don't know what the funding looks like right now for this project, but we we would need to consider that as well.
Owen O'Donnell?
That kind of leads into my question, which is, what would be the process for updating information in this ERI, you know, that, as David said, changes so rapidly? You know, and who's who would bear the responsibility for that?
I will somewhat defer to Tristan or our engineering staff here. My understanding of the ERI is it's really a product of the Environmental Commission. We've just taken it a step further by also adopting it into the master plan. So you know, I don't know if the board can necessarily, you know, make substantial changes without consulting the Environmental Commission, or I, or put a different way, I think the Environmental Commission might be the one kind of driving the bus on this. So, you know, if Deanna or Tristan, you have additional thoughts, you know, please let us know.
Yep. Thanks, Justin. So the ERI actually came out of infrastructure and operations rather than the Environmental Commission at this time. Unlike the 2010 document, we did work with the Environmental Commission and they did review the document before it came to the planning board. So I think we would probably redirect the question to council as to how often they would like to see the document updated. And and I'm sure they would be looking for a recommendation from staff. And in terms of who would be doing the updating, my sense is that we would probably work with Clark, Hatton and Hince again to make those changes.
Certainly, one, one way of doing it in terms of process is as sometime passes and it looks like it's really appropriate to update the data, to do it by memo. Or so, rather than every year, having a master plan hearing, updating the ERI and then collectively, at the end of a certain period of time, gather all those documents which are documenting what changes should be made, putting it into a master, a master plan amendment of the ERI. And that's at least one way of approaching it.
Yeah, that sounds like a, that sounds like a good approach. I I think, I mean, my understanding of what we've talked about tweaking tonight, adding the graph of the frequency of extreme storm events and updating the open space map to show the two parcels that are purchased. Or maybe, well, to show the two parcels since one is in process and the other is already acquired. And I guess the third map being the one that shows that that relates to housing. You know, I I would hope that budget permitting those could be incorporated into this in in short order while, you know, before this project is completely closed out. But I also recognize that that might not be possible under budget constraints and that if we make a recommendation for that, it should acknowledge within, within the scope and and with an understanding of budget constraints, but
Can I ask a question? When you talk about the graph and extreme weather events, is that just storms or it's any extreme event like extreme heat, et cetera?
It's it's storms.
Storms, okay.
I mean, the way I've seen it, typically it's storms.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're raining.
And I would just say, you know, in terms of the cost, I mean, I can't speak for council, but we all the time modify contracts and do change orders to contracts. And I would think, you know, I would at least like to to have Clark Hatton, you know, give us a a budget to make these what seemed to me to be relatively minor changes and you know, if it doesn't fit within the existing budget, you know, just bring it to council.
Justin, let's go.
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the the two properties that we were talking about. Of course, we should put the Landwin Harrington one within this, you know, make those changes. That was really just a matter of it. I mean, this board knows. It was only a couple of months ago that they're finally, you know, it finally changed hands to the municipality. I would hesitate to do the same with the shektel property at this time, just because it's not ours. It's not technically preserved, so that would be my advice.
Yeah, understood. Freddie, I saw your hand go up. Did you have something you want to say?
No, I didn't. But I would have just said exactly what Justin said, which is that until it's actually owns it. But no, I didn't have anything else to add.
Yeah, point taken. I have a a quick point, which we may not, may not be able to pull up this particular map. I noticed in looking through the ERI that on pages 23 and 24 of the PDF, I don't know whether those pages are numbered in the in a printed document, but it shows geologic zones. Passaic Formation, Lakatong Formation, I think are two. And the third one is labeled Brunswick Aquifer. But actually Passaic Formation is not on there. Instead of Passaic Formation, which is the language that's the the geologic zone that's described on the previous page in the text. What is Passaic Formation Zone is is labeled Brunswick Aquifer, which may also be correct. But it doesn't jive with what the text says, and it's a different type of classification than the other two zones that are shown on the map. So I just wanted to flag that in case it was inadvertent. Not to yet, not for any other reason. And if there's a, if there's a reason why that was labeled that way, you know, I have no.
Yeah, I can revisit that. And if it's a nonsubstantial correction, if it was an error, we'll, we'll fix that right up. Thank you.
Again, it's Brunswick Aquifer, and I think should be called Passaic Formation, but you take a look and
Yeah, we'll do.
Figure it out.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I invite members of the public to weigh in? Okay, we have two members, two attendees in the attendees room, if you will. If either of you wishes to speak about this and address the board for up to three minutes, now's your opportunity to do that. If you could virtually raise your hand using one of the icons at the bottom of your screen, the raise hand icon. Now's the time to do that. I am not seeing either individual raise their hand. So with that, thanks for sitting in. I hope it's been interesting. I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and ask for any final thoughts or comments. And if there are none, then maybe someone would like to move that we adopt this into the master plan with advice slash suggestion slash request to update in the de minimis or at least relatively minor ways that we've discussed.
And I, I'm happy to move that we adopt it. And I wanted to clarify that the data set for the housing was a chart, not a not a map.
Okay, all right. Obviously, did not look at that section as closely. You got me. All right, David has moved the ERI, moved adoption of ERI. Mr. O'Donnell seconded. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Nuka, when did you join the meeting? I missed your arrival time.
Hi, Carrie. I joined about 7:15.
Okay, I will not be including you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capazoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Good. Thank you, everyone. I think as of right now, if I'm not mistaken, we don't have any agenda items for the first May meeting. Is, is that still correct? Or I'm not suggesting that we necessarily need to cancel it right now, but it might very well be canceled.
I have nothing scheduled at this time.
Okay. Well, do we want?
And I'm highly in favor of canceling it because there's a dinner honoring Deanna that night.
And we're not all invited? That's great. That's great to know. Congratulations, Deanna, for whatever. Can you share a little more information, Councilman Cohen? Not, not the time and place. I'm not talking about crashing the party. I'm interested in, in the recognition part of the story.
Of course. Yeah, correct me if I'm, if I get it a little bit wrong. You know, I think it's the American Society of Civil Engineers, New Jersey Chapter honoring Deanna for public, public service.
Yes. Are you getting the Service to the People Award, Deanna?
I think that's basically it, yes. It is the Service to the People Award.
That is my favorite one. That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's much appreciated to be recognized.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Okay, well, then you, the board, I guess, can expect to get a formal notice of cancellation as soon as it is formal. And we'll hold off on, I think at this point, we might also not have anything for the second May meeting, but we have the housing plan coming up in June. So that'll be really interesting and meeting worthy for probably two, two full meetings. So with that, Mr. Cohen?
Move that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Have a, have a wonderful weekend. Enjoy whichever holidays you may celebrate going on right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.